We're calling the meeting of the Board of Selectmen to order. You guys, you know, if you need to still talk in the back of the room or whatever, we have a couple of things we need to do before your meeting. So please, if you need to, that's fine.
Is all set?
Okay. All right. Open session, public meetings are subject to being videotaped. Your image and voice may be recorded. Okay, we have minutes for January 8th, open session. While we're present, are people ready to approve?
Yep. Motion to approve.
Second.
Any comments or questions?
Nope.
All right, hearing none, we'll take a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
The next item is a vote to replace Mary Arata as the alternate member to the National Nez-Zeep Valley Regional Dispatch District Administration Board and to appoint Selectman Lisa Wysocki. Motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any comments or questions?
Nope.
All right, hearing none, we'll take a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Not sure if we have a meeting this week. Have you heard?
No agenda.
No agenda, and it's so it's a little late, huh?
I think they had a frozen sewer pipe at Harper Town Hall, so I think they might have had a different crisis today than getting the agenda out.
Okay. I guess I'll stay tuned.
Yeah, I, once I find out what the agenda is, every, both of you should be on the distribution list now.
Right. Okay.
They didn't answer me though.
Yes, I know.
I copied Shelley and Ross.
Okay.
All right, next are any remaining budget requests. We're holding the collector of taxes until our meeting next week. We have personal committee budget, $5,200 level funded.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any comments or questions?
No.
All right, hearing none, we'll take a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
The next is fire and EMS, but we'll, I don't think we have enough time to talk about that between now and the 15th. And we're holding communications, so we'll leave those.
Did we approve the public buildings? I did get a little feedback from Keith. Did we?
Yeah, she did it last meeting, 192.
We did approve it?
Yep.
Okay, well, I did talk to him, but...
Yeah, I think we were going to catch that finance rate if he had.
Yeah.
All right.
Okay.
Okay, good.
All right, I'm going to, yeah, say over the next one for a moment, let's see if there's anything else. No, actually, I don't see anything else we can do in two minutes here, so...
Well, very last thing, the conservation purchase and sale.
Yeah, that two minutes, I don't even think, yeah, I don't even think that. All right, we'll just hang for a couple of minutes to start at the appointed time in case there are people coming to attend.
It's, you're Elizabeth, yes?
Me?
Yeah.
I'm Donna.
Donna, sorry. I forgot that from the application, I was buzzing through today. Donna, what's your last name?
Whitten, W-H-I-T-T-E-N.
Okay, thank you.
All right, those who are proponents can come forward, and we, and major contributors can come forward, and we'll, we'll get a start on this. This is a, a public hearing to consider the request of Regal Cinemas for an all alcohol restaurant license at Solomon and Tom Mall. Would you like to start with just a brief explanation?
Sure. Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Andrew Upton representing the applicant, and with me is Donna Whitten, who is the proposed manager of record for the liquor license. She's also the current and longtime GM of the theater. I have a brief PowerPoint presentation, which, as you may recall, we reviewed this data when I was here in the fall, so I'd be glad to refresh your recollection about it, but if I'm blabbering points you ought to remember, feel free to urge me along.
All righty.
The Regal Entertainment Group operates 569 movie theaters in 42 states. There's been a lot of mergers and acquisitions in the industry recently, but Regal is consistently either the first or second largest exhibitor in the U.S. and sometimes in the world. Close to 200 of these movie theaters serve liquor currently. And three of those are in Massachusetts, Taunton, Boston, and Lanesboro, Mass. So, the general trend in the movie industry is to improve technology and the display of the films, upgrades in seating and amenities, which include food and alcohol, and we've already gotten the good food.
Yes.
So, as you may know, people can pretty much watch a movie anywhere they want these days. You can watch at home, you can watch on your iPad, you can watch on the phone, so it's becoming increasingly competitive. And the reason we're here and the reason that Regal and other theater chains and independent theaters are all improving food and amenities and alcohol is, they need to do that to compete. They need to offer a better experience to get people into the theater. Surveys and market research tell us that this is what the customers want, and this is what helps drive the bottom line and keep the theaters going. We'll tell you that our research shows approximately 70 percent of moviegoers are over the age of 21. Approximately 1 in 10 people says, say they would have a drink at the movies. Of the people that go to the movies, it's closer to 1 in 20 that actually order one. So someone might respond to a survey saying, yes, I'd love to have a glass of wine at the movies, but the reality is, it's closer to 5 percent that actually buy one. So, one thing that comes with the service of alcohol is a strict alcohol control plan. Regal understands that a license is a privilege, not a right, and they take it seriously, and they train their staff. And, as you can see from page two, we have an onsite manager at all times. Every patron must present a valid ID. Staff is in the theaters, making sure there's no underage drinking, no pass along drinking, no intoxicated drinking. And in fact, they do that now because, I'm sure it doesn't happen in Berlin and Marlboro, but I understand that at some theaters, people try to sneak in alcohol, or young people come in under the influence. So Donna and her staff have years of experience monitoring and trying to prevent that. Training, Regal has its own proprietary training program that everyone has to go through before alcohol service starts. Anyone purchasing and consuming alcohol has to have a wristband, so we can see who has it and who should have it. There's a limit on drink possession. A patron may only possess and purchase one container of alcohol at a time. This is one of our most important things, because what this means is if I go with my wife to the movies, and she says, please go get us two beers, I can only get one when I go up there. I can't get two and bring one back. Anyone who gets a drink has to be physically present at the bar and look the bartender in the eye and show ID and let them get it. So this is one of our biggest defenses against someone bringing extra drinks back to people that shouldn't have them. We currently utilize third-party security services and also detail police. Donna tells me we have an excellent relationship with mall security, with the police, and there's, you know, longstanding interaction there. The last thing is patron comments and concerns. And the reason this is important is because if there's, there's about 200 people in the movie theater, if there's one person acting poorly because of alcohol or whatever, we're going to have 199 other people complaining and asking for a refund. So, we don't give them a second chance, we don't let it go. We're pretty strict on anyone who sort of misbehaves in the theater. And I'm sure now you've seen the preview ads that say, be polite, don't talk on your cellphone, don't text, don't shine your light on people. People are paying, you know, when you go to the movies, you're, you're buying an expensive ticket, you know, you're spending considerable money on snacks and drinks and all sorts of stuff, and people expect sort of peace and quiet and a nice atmosphere. So we're, we're pretty strict with them, and that will continue with alcohol service. History of good standing, Regal's at the forefront, they were some of the first to bring alcohol, to bring in the good seats, to bring in the enhanced foods. They've had alcohol at many of these places for years and years. They have never been subject to a violation. And I think part of that is because they have a good compliance program, they take it seriously. Part of it is, people don't drink that much at the movies. You know, when you go out to dinner, you might have two or three or more glasses of wine, you're at a sports bar watching a game, you could have several drinks. The average person has one drink at a movie. And the reason is because in order to get another drink, you have to get up and miss the movie, and people don't want to do that.
Yep.
So a very, very small percentage of people return for a second drink. Finally, Regal prides itself on being a good citizen. Donna can tell you they work a lot with the schools, they're generous donors to charities, they take their role in the community seriously, and hopefully that's an important factor when considering whether or not they deserve the privilege of a license. So, that is our overview. I can also tell you that we estimate there's probably over 30 movie theaters in Massachusetts that serve alcohol. Right in this area, Framingham, Milbury, and Littleton have, have or have recently gotten liquor, so it's, it's a competitive issue for us as well. I can tell you that we have met with representatives of the mall, we've met with representatives of Marlboro, including Economic Development, Police and Licensing Board, they're all in favor. We met with the manager of the mall, who's in favor. He was recently replaced by a new manager, so I talked to him, and he is also in favor. So I have, for the record, an email of support from that fellow. So hopefully that covers sort of the public need as well as the character and fitness of the applicant. I can tell you, as a little more detail, we have a distinctive cup set for alcoholic drinks, so you won't get a beer in the same cup you got a Coke in, so we can tell the difference and know who has it. We ID every, every time. As I said, you have to have your ID to get a drink, you can't get a drink for someone else, but you also can't come back and say, hey, can I have another, without showing the ID a second time. There is no free pouring, everything's measured from the bottle, so if you get a glass of wine or a gin and tonic, it comes in a preset amount that can't be exceeded. All drinks are from recipes, so no one can, you know, make a crazy concoction of extra alcohol for their friends. All managers will be fully trained with the Regal Training Program, and Donna herself is looking forward to the training program, but has already completed online tips training just to sort of get ahead of it and get a sense of what you need to do. She's been carding people who are trying to get into R-rated movies for probably 10 or 15 years, but this is another level, so that's important too.
Okay.
So, I could talk much more about this, but hopefully I've given you the overview, and we're glad to answer any questions.
Are there any questions from the board?
I think I asked my questions last time you were here.
I did too, so...
Okay. Are there any questions or comments from those who are attending tonight? Peter?
Why is it advisable to limit an inconvenience patron to one drink?
We limit them to one drink at a time.
But why is that advisable?
Because we find, well, first of all, we want to make sure everyone shows an ID, so if you come up with a, and ask for two, you know, we want to make sure you're not bringing it to someone who doesn't have ID or who, you know, may not, you know, may be intoxicated or may have some other issue that, someone else who shouldn't be served. And the other is, is, you know, we, we put a limit on how much people can drink, because if people drink too much, they get rowdy and cause problems, and we want to, you know, we want to stop that before it happens.
Is that a corporate policy that comes down from the top rather than a site-specific policy?
It's a corporate policy, and it applies to all Regals. I know it applies to all Regals in Massachusetts.
Okay. Peter, you have any follow-up on that?
No, I just personally found that very inconvenient, because there's two of us at a seat, and one would stay behind, and do for many food and drink purchases, but yeah, that's of course up to the corporation and the board.
Yeah, I mean, I agree that it's an inconvenience, but it's sort of a purposeful one.
Yeah, I think it's necessary, because you could have a 21-year-old bringing a 20-year-old a drink.
Okay. We note here that in the application, I'm not sure that we've been given the details of the days and the hours of operation that are proposed.
We rarely have any movies that go beyond midnight.
Right, our last, like, right now, our last show is usually around 10:30, and we usually lock the doors about 20 minutes after that.
Yeah, this is really just technical for the application. What are you asking us for licensure for?
I think a 12:00 PM, a 12:00 AM closing hour.
12:00 AM closing hour, and opening time, is there one?
What's the earliest we show?
The earliest show we usually have is usually around 9:30 in the summertime.
9:30 in?
The AM.
The AM. So then you'd be asking?
For 9:00 AM to midnight.
9:00 AM to midnight, okay. And all seven days of the week, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. All right, so I'm going to take the liberty of adding that to this application.
Sure.
Okay.
I believe it may be ABCC policy that you can only have 10:00 AM on Sunday.
I think so. I thought so. For all that I know for liquor stores it is, but I'm not sure about restaurants.
Yeah, so I would say 9:00 to midnight.
Okay.
And then 10 o'clock, 10:00 AM on Sundays.
Okay, so I've added 9:00 AM to 12:00 AM Monday through Saturday, and 10:00 AM to 12:00 AM Sundays. Okay?
Sounds great.
All right. And we have had no negative input from any of the town departments or police or anything of that sort, correct?
No, that's correct.
All right.
I just technically need the tear sheet that it ran in the paper, but I'm sure it did.
Yes.
As our proof of it, but not the final.
Okay, do we have that?
No, but if you must to give it, you can email it to me overnight or tomorrow before I send it to the ABCC.
Okay. All right. So with that caveat that we will not send this approval to the ABCC until we see that tear sheet, I would accept a motion to grant. The license is described here and described on the local licensing authority review record.
So moved. Second.
Any further comments or questions? All right, hearing none, we'll take a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mary. That, one email from the mall I've just, that he just gave me, I've just put in here, and I'll put it in my bag, okay?
Okay.
All right.
If you just keep it all good, that's me.
Good. You gonna sign it?
Oh, I'm just, sorry. It looked like it was going to Mary.
No, no, sorry, I was passing it to you. I was talking to Mary and passing it to you. I'm multitasking. Put that right up there. And let me just put this stuff back together, all right? All right, and, right on schedule, we have our next meeting, which was with respect to the Sawyer Hill Condominium Trust's request for the town to release an infrastructure and drainage escrow. Who's here representing that?
Hi.
Hi.
Hi, I'm Jennifer Pike, I'm the treasurer of the Sawyer Hill Condominium Trust.
Nice to meet you.
Nice to meet you.
Okay, I'll just outline this, when the construction was done there, there was an escrow taken with respect to drainage effects on abutters and on the public ways. That's been around for a long time. We, there was an original $75,000 balance, and now there is $43,800. And the trustees of Sawyer Hill have requested that we release that amount. Before we did that, we wanted to send a note around to abutters just to be sure that there weren't any existing, you know, problems that were unaddressed. Are there any abutters here who are here with that kind of question or concern?
Well, I'm here actually in favor of releasing it.
Yeah.
Because I was affected mainly because of the drainage ponds that were up there that feed into the ledge that feed into my, my well, surface wells I have for my greenhouse business. So I was really, with the engineering stuff, I was really into, you know, making sure that your, all your road drainage went into those retention ponds that have been there for probably 150 years.
And they do, and you're satisfied?
As a matter of fact, I actually, to be all honesty, I've actually have better water now than I had prior to this.
Yes, that's what we like.
Okay, that's excellent. I would also note that I received a text from Jean Vouches, who's another abutter, but is not able to be here tonight, and she indicated that they, you know, while they had some problems initially, that they have not had any problems in years, and she indicated, and asked me to convey, that she too was perfectly happy with, with the release of this.
Thank you, it was a good thing.
I would, I would note that, you know, the release of the escrow doesn't, you know, release sort of, you know, contractual or, you know, common law liabilities if you guys do further construction or if something happens that, that creates a further problem. So this is really just the release of the escrow, and it doesn't affect any other obligations or rights of abutters, et cetera, and I think that's well understood. Is that correct?
Yes.
When we return this, we will send this with a cover letter confirming that, and we'll ask you guys to acknowledge that if you don't, if you don't mind.
Absolutely.
Okay? I should say when and if we, you know, we release.
Is it us who does that, or is it the ZBA?
Yes.
Wasn't that the ZBA?
The ZBA will actually be the one to release it.
The ones who approve it.
But they were seeking our recommendation, so we will give a positive, I mean, if we vote to do so after this discussion, we will, we will issue, you know, a positive recommendation to them and indicate that the result of our going out and canvassing, you know, the abutters by notice resulted in nobody who had an exception, and two of the key abutters actually positively coming forward and indicating that they had no objection to the, to the removal. So, that would be, the vote that we would take tonight is a vote to, to recommend.
Support the release.
And I think we will also recommend that they, you know, that they do the letter that we indicated, I don't think they'll have any objection to that.
Absolutely.
All right, any comments or questions at this point further? Okay, hearing none, I would take a vote to recommend to the ZBA that the remaining balance of the escrow be returned.
So moved.
Second.
And again, that, that recommendation should be that you should acknowledge the continuing obligations, but...
Absolutely.
All right, if there are no further comments or questions, we'll take a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks for your patience, I did want to go out, you know, with notices and everything in this case.
No, absolutely, that's great.
Okay?
Thank you.
All righty, thank you. I'm just putting this out of the way, no, no, I'm just putting this out of the way so that I can get into the other stuff here, pick up where we left off. The next item on, are you guys here for a particular? Okay.
Okay, I'm guessing it's your first Sawyer Hill, and it's listed.
What's it?
That is on ZBA.
Oh.
That's right. I didn't recognize her from this far.
Yeah, she's my neighbor.
All right, the, the one that we, the major one we have in this file that we were holding that I have further information on was the, the fire department budget. The fire department budget as presented, in the case, and bear with me for a moment, I'm going to get my notes out here. I met with the fire chief on this on Friday, so... Just a minute, because we went over, we went over about four scenarios here, so, okay. The, the total amount of the budget increase is 168, basically $169,000, and that represents a 32 and change percent increase over the previous year, okay? I sat with the fire chief on this, and the, this is a further step, and it may be the final step with respect to the staffing of fire and rescue. Basically, at this point, we have two per diems, you know, in the sort of a core, a core set of shifts. You guys don't have the stuff that he gave us last?
I took a look at it, I think it was an attachment in an email.
Yeah, okay, well, I'll try to, I'll try to go over it.
Okay.
The chief is really doing, doing two things at this point. One is to create six member groups who will be on call at fixed times during the week. And they will be the ones who are called, so when a call... So when a call goes out, it does not go out to everybody, and you don't get, you know, everybody necessarily showing up. Chief Luchwal, if you think, if I start to talk rubbish here at anything, you raise your hand, okay? All right. The other thing that we're doing is in a set of core shifts. We are adding a full-time police, a, a fire officer, um, in some of the shifts, and two full-time in some of the shifts. So to give you an example, during the week, the, we will have member group coverage from midnight until 6:00. From 6:00 to 9:00, uh, we will have one full-time and one per diem. From 9:00 to 3:00, we will have two full-time and one per diem. And from 3:00 o'clock to 6:00, we will go back to one full-time plus one per diem. That is the coverage during those key hours, Monday through Friday.
I assume that they've probably figured out when these people are most needed?
Mm-hmm. Yep. Most needed, and also to a certain extent, looking at the times when it may be difficult to get, uh, call people in.
Right.
I mean, because there are people who work out of town, et cetera, who...
Right.
Okay? We will remain at two per diem on Saturdays and Sundays during the hours of 6:00 in the morning until 6:00 in the evening. So really, you know, what this is doing is, it is going to the full, to full-time, augmenting the per diem in, you know, in those, in those key functions. It will give us a hy, still a hybrid, because the overnight and evening hours are, you know, are covered by the call. And the per diem are often, you know, the same people who are also eligible for call. But what this does is, it, it, it provides for paid coverage during the hours of 6:00 to 6:00 Monday through Friday. So those are, uh, those are the changes that, that explains, I would say, um, 90% of, of the changes. The other changes are relatively minor, they're the colas on existing employees, et cetera. So that, uh, that is what the increase is all about. It is an, you know, an application, a specific application of things that we've been talking about for, you know, a number of years, in terms of moving toward a hybrid department that had professional coverage.
Yep.
In, in key areas. There you go, that's, uh, I'll stop there and see if there are any questions.
So it follows the recommendations in the study that was done in...
Mm-hmm, absolutely.
Okay.
Any other questions from the board?
I can't think of anything right now.
David, did I represent that reasonably?
Absolutely.
Okay. Yeah, as I say, we, I sat with the chief for almost two hours, and we went over several scenarios, so I wanted to be sure that I actually got that one correct. Yeah. Peter, do you have any comments or questions?
It's, um, it strikes me as a huge increase, which it is.
Mm-hmm. It is, as I said, it's a 33% increase, yep.
Seems awfully, uh, awfully high for a small town. Does that include any other, uh, any other increases or decreases of other parts of the fire department? Besides these additional folks?
Um...
The additional staffing, I should say.
The colas and...
Yeah, well, no, there are, there are, uh, there are colas that, uh, that apply, um...
Okay, so that includes all the raises and all that everybody else got, too?
Yep.
Can you outline the raises?
They're just, uh, they are just the, the cola that we had established in the September to September.
I think it's...
Is that for everyone, or everyone but the officers? Or is it top to bottom?
That is top to bottom, in this budget, yep. There, you know, no, there are no other, there are no other diminishments to that, there's still a call budget. If we don't spend that call budget, which of course will be impacted by the number of calls that come out in the, you know, overnight and evening hours, if we don't spend that budget, that budget, you know, that, that call money would go back to the town at the end of the year.
And what about the inspector role, Dave's role? Is that being, uh, looked at? We had talked about that.
It, uh, it remains as it is.
Including the overtime?
Including at this point the overtime in this budget, yes. However, in this case, the overtime, in this, in this instance, the overtime is, um, is a separate budget line item.
Not part of this budget?
It is part of this budget, last time. However, last time, because, the last two years, because we were in transition, we passed, um, what was almost sort of a unitary budget for the fire, so we did not...
A lump sum?
Yes, basically a raw lump sum. Uh, this breaks out, um, the, uh, the overtime, and actually, that is one of the ones that I still, that I do have a question about on this, because it does, um, I'm not sure I understand, um, that, that particular line here. And when I met with the chief last Friday, I was really trying to understand structurally, you know, what he was doing.
So that's something you're gonna still handle, approach?
Yep. Yep, I mean, it, this one indicates, and you'll see it, it indicates 14,000 for the previous year as a budget, but of course, we didn't have a line item for that. Uh, I suspect that is a figure that was actually expended, and it has a higher figure here. So that's the one that I think we still need to, uh...
What's the projected number?
Um, the projected number here is 28,000. And that would, uh...
And what's the base?
Um, the base is, uh, well, the ba, the base remain, the, the problem here is that the, the base is a full-time wages base, and because we're also hiring, uh, full-time firefighters, I can't really, it's embedded in that. The increases that I understand to have been applied in this budget to people is, are just the cola. So we would take the 65 and change base, if you're talking about the current inspection services, and you would add the cola. Is there, David, is that correct? For the inspectional services in this budget?
I'm not certain.
Okay. I can confirm that, yeah.
You would have to forward that to...
Yeah. My understanding is that it's this budget, this year's budget, on, you know, on the salary, is this year's budget plus just the cola.
So that would, that would put it somewhere, the inspector's role would be somewhere in the 90, 90-something thousand for the year, based on that quick analysis?
I don't know how you get to that.
65 plus 28?
No, 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 the, this is why it's difficult, this is why I need to talk. We are hiring full-time employees, other full-time employees, who will also be eligible for overtime. Do you see, so I, you know, that's why I need to, to dig in on, on that one.
So is it, can I suggest that that be broken out in the line items before the proposed budget's finalized?
We don't, well, we only have, I mean, we can certainly do that as a matter of understanding with the chief. The, um, the line items provide for full-time, uh, wages and, uh, overtime as, I, it's not overtime, it's, the budget is not broken up as overtime for a particular person, you follow me? It's just, we have salary, we have wages, we have overtime. And, and the budget structure is not, uh, not, not built out in that way. I will say that we have had conversations with the, the police, even David is, is aware of these, that when he is doing work that is not related to the inspectional activities, for instance, if he is going to a training program, because he is, you know, part of the bench strength, if there's nobody else here, and we have a major emergency, et cetera, uh, and needs to keep up his training, that those are done at the regular call rates and not at the overtime rates. And the same is true if he actually goes out on a call, so that we, um, have agreed, as we reviewed this over the last month or two leading up to the budget, that that would be the way, that, that would apply to the inspectional.
But how could that be possible? That's part of his 40, if he's on a call during those first 40 hours, it'll bump him above 40 due to arithmetic?
No, no. If, if he, if he is doing inspectional work and he gets called out, this is my understanding from working with, you know, with the chief, but, and he gets called out, he will get call pay for that, and that will not go against his 40 hours. And if he goes to training above and beyond his 40 hours, et cetera, then that will also be compensated at the same rate as any other firefighter doing the same thing. So that, that, that's one of the things that we're doing in terms of adjusting this. Okay? So I've, do people feel that they want to sign this now, or do you want me to get further detail on the overtime issues?
Why don't you go ahead and do the overtime issues?
Okay, that's fine. Then we will put that aside, and I'll, I'll talk to the chief about that later in the week, probably Wednesday. Okay. I don't think we had any other approvals pending that we are not holding for some reason.
True, on budgets.
Yeah, on budgets at this point, so that's where we are with that. Okay?
Sounds good.
All right. Just put things back together here. Hmm?
Lots of papers going on today.
Lots of papers going on here today, yep. Okay. Uh, so next, we have two applications for, um, money from the community preservation mitigation funding. I don't know, I certainly, I mean, I looked at these to understand what they were...
I think I need more time to...
Yeah, I do, I feel like the same thing.
To look at them, and I think, isn't it a February date that we need to make a decision by?
That's, that's correct. So we just, I mean, these have just come in. I'd suggest maybe we put them on the agenda for two weeks from tonight, to be sure that we have some time to think about it. I will say my own, my first reaction to, to them was, um, you know, as a matter of, as a matter of principle here, we have tried to award things from this mitigation fund where there was some other demonstrated support, both, both from the town, and, or certainly from the town, and/or by virtue of grants or contributions. We've made some exceptions to that for some, you know, very small items, like 3, 4, 5,000 dollars, but we, you know, I think hewed to that rule pretty consistently, where we're talking about significant expenditures out of this fund. My, my first reaction to these two is that I'm not sure that I saw the, you know, the demonstrated alternate support for this, either a special article from the town, or contributions, or whatever, but that was my, that was my initial...
Is that something we should communicate to these groups? To let them know, it would be...
Well, that was just my, I mean, I'm just, I was just giving you my reaction, I don't know.
I think at least with the, yes, there were grants for the playground.
Yeah.
That they wish to apply for.
No, that they may have gotten in addition to the money they're asking for.
I didn't read it that way. I thought that they were indicating that they were available.
Is it worth, too, maybe having them in to speak to their...
I think that might be good. Why don't we have them in in two weeks? I'm, I'm saying that because I may not be able to be here next week, so...
Okay.
That, that sounds good.
Yeah, I have another meeting for another obligation that was put on Tuesday night, because of course, usually Tuesday night is not a problem with respect to Slavon, but that one, uh... So, yeah, maybe have them in, um, and you might want to say particularly, I mean, from my point of view, I'd, I'd love to have them describe the other support.
Right.
That they have for that, and the status of the other support. I mean, I'm not opposed to voting some kind of, you know, a conditional award that says that will match a grant or something like that if they don't have it ahead of time, but, uh, I, I do like, to see, even beyond grant money, I like to see the fact that the town is willing to vote, vote some monies toward a project, rather than just breaking the piggy bank.
If they don't get a grant?
Yeah. No, not even if they don't get a grant.
Really, in addition?
In addition, I, I like to see, because I think it's an endorsement of a project. I'm not talking about it has to be all of it, but, you know, some significant proportion, I've always liked to see.
Yeah.
Vote it, because that tells me...
The people support it.
That the people support it.
Right.
And not just a small, you know, group of people supporting it. Uh, and I think that the, um, the process of going out to the town with a special article, and people having then to familiarize people with the project, and talk to people about the project, I think is an important part of, of the whole process. But that's, you know, that's one, one man's opinion only, but...
Well, can you, can you communicate that in an email to these groups when you ask them to come?
I can, if you'd like to look at it.
Sure.
I can also talk to Lawrence and Julie.
Yes, if you'd like to, that's fine.
Okay, so I'm not gonna communicate that?
Yes, you can communicate that, and we can set up an appointment for two weeks from tonight.
Do you know the other group, anybody from the other group? I do, too, I just didn't know.
Yeah, well, Julie's with Ratch, and, uh, this is the first one that's coming from there, and I think the other one's around Sully Oak, right?
Yes.
Yes. There's my neighbor just down the street.
Okay, okay.
Can you just copy the Slavon's office, so I have it to... You will not be here next week, Tom?
Uh, I don't think I will be, I'll, we'll talk about that at the end, but I don't think I will be. Okay, um, the next is school regionalization study update.
And I didn't know if everybody had time to look at the information that Mary sent you.
There is a paper clipped copy for everybody. I'm just keeping it in there for next week's regionalization visit anyhow, so there'll be spares, but there's three sets there, Tom.
Okay. You don't do paper, do you? Yeah, no, no, that's fine. Yeah, I guess I, I didn't have a huge amount of time to look at it because I had some other things that were on the, uh, on my agenda, but I guess my, um, my feeling about it was that the, uh, the, the methodology for governance seemed okay and we had discussed that and I still sort of thought that. It's, uh, to me, um, the added costs of retirement health benefits and the applicability, I, I really didn't see answered here sufficient to my way of thinking, um, or.
I'm hoping that will be at the next meeting.
Ability to understand from these materials or whatever.
Right.
That, that was, that was probably my biggest point. And I also, um, I also would, you know, would certainly like more information about how we integrate the different compensation levels. Are we going to a highest common denominator? I don't think we're going to a lowest common denominator.
No.
Are we retaining some kind of tiered?
I think they are hoping that they will be able to, and, and I don't know how this is going to work because, uh, when you negotiate, you have to negotiate it. But I think what they're hoping is that the Berlin teachers, because they're at a higher level, will be slow in their increases until the other two groups catch up. And I don't, I think they intend to do that after they have this voted in Maytown meeting. So we won't know.
But that's a process that could go on for.
Right, well, they're talking about a transition.
Three, four, five, six years, right?
It could.
So the additional benefits that our teachers would get wouldn't play in or, I mean, because if they get additional benefits, that's why their salary is higher now.
Increase in salary?
Well.
You mean the increases in salary would be slower so that the other two groups could catch up?
But I think what you're saying is, it's part of the quid pro quo if we
Yeah, they would.
Provide the retirement health coverage, if they would come down to the level.
You cannot reduce salary.
During the contract period.
Right.
And their contract period runs what now?
Boy, I don't, I don't know. I have not heard that they need someone to, um, sit in on negotiations, so.
I don't, I just didn't know what the term of the current contract was. You remember? No.
Those do, I mean, those do count in to your entire salaries, include your benefits typically.
I think Walter was the last one that was on the negotiation team. So it probably is coming up, is my guess.
That would be the first, but I think those are the real, you know, to me, those are the real two keys and you're right, there, there may end up being an interact, you know, interaction between them. Um, I would definitely, definitely like to see some estimates of the retirement healthcare obligation. And I don't understand, since I never served on the school committee side of town government, as we talked about before, I don't know whether we, they reserve against those, whether it's totally pay as you go.
I think that they have some idea and they budget for it each year.
Right, but my point is, is it on a pay as you go basis where you estimate each year what you're going to pay out?
That's what it sounds like.
Do you estimate, or do you, if you will capitalize, if you know, so you estimate that you're looking at teachers, you have a cohort of teachers who are likely to retire in the next five years, you only have two retired now, do you, do you, do you budget? Okay, thank you. Um, this appears to run on, uh, the, the budget. The current contract appears to expire on, uh, August 24th of 2019.
They usually start negotiations, you know, in 18, so would be this year.
So it would be, um, the school year beginning in September, you know, of 2019, that would first effect with any adjustment either of benefits or of, um, compensation. Okay. Yeah, well, anyway, I mean, I would, I'd like to understand how they do that. If, I, my bet is that they do it at this point on a pay as you go.
Yes.
Basis.
Unless it's changed, I believe that's.
Yeah.
How it's done.
And I'd, I'd love to see what that's costing us on a pay as you go basis, you know? Because that's the sort of thing, obviously, that can jump considerably, you know, if you have a cohort of teachers who retire, you know?
Right.
So.
I don't think that you're going to, I mean, they're coming to have the regional agreement approved at Maytown meeting. Then they're going to have this transition year.
I understand.
And, um, I don't think we're going to actually know what the initial costs are for, say, the first year of regionalized, of regionalized district.
Before we vote?
No, I don't think.
It's going to be a problem, you know that.
Yeah, I know, it's a problem. That's my concern. That is my concern. I think they're saying in the future, that snapshot, um, that I, that I shared with you.
Yes.
That Boylston's increase would be 32,000 a year and Berlin's decrease would be 14,000. But that doesn't take into account things like negotiating the initial contract. I guess that's where I'm, I'm concerned. And what will it cost us in the initial years?
So I guess these are questions to ask the big men.
Yep, and I'm not sure that they have all the answers yet. I'm hoping they will before town meeting.
I hope so.
Um, because I think that is a concern. Right. Um, not to mention some of the other questions that I think we talked about when they were in the last time, like how this will be an advantage to students.
Mm-hmm.
And, um, even how the sixth grade moving up to Tejano, how that's been positive or not. I haven't heard answers to those type of questions yet. So, um, yeah, there's still some concerns. But I guess they're coming to next week's?
Yeah.
Next week's meeting?
Yep.
Okay, send us your, send us your questions then if you.
Okay, I mean, what I gave you is basically my questions and I'll, you know, catch it on, uh.
YouTube?
On YouTube.
Oh, you're going to miss that one.
Well, unless you want to ask them to reschedule.
I don't think that's fair right now. And I mean, at this point, I'm just going to ask those questions, you know? And I, those are the questions. I think you guys understand them. I'll certainly be happy to put them in writing and I will listen to, you know, their answers and then we can talk about it, but because, but I think we might as well.
Okay.
Go ahead.
Tom, if your meeting doesn't conflict, you can remote your way in. Remember, you approved it.
I did, but my meeting conflicts, that is exactly conflicts as a matter of fact. Yes. Okay.
Okay.
All right. All right, last, I think last, right? Oh, no, second to the last. We have, um, some endorsements, uh. Can I take a look at that because I seem to have lost mine in all of this paper? Oh, yes, this is, uh, last week we approved the reclassification of the assistant treasurer. And this, we now have, um, a modification of the personnel review sheet, which reflects that reclassification and, um, the increases in compensation and so on that attend it. We've already reviewed these materials. This is really just an, you know, application of that. So, um, I would take a motion to approve.
Motion to approve?
This is, uh, this is motion to approve the, uh. Yes, step merit review and recommendations of the treasurer with respect to Kate Stacy.
So moved.
Second.
Any further comments or questions?
No.
Hearing none. Take a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Um, we also have, uh, the job description that attends that action. Motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
It's a different position, actually.
Hmm?
Oh.
This is a, an entry level treasurer filing clerk post.
Now, is this because of the combined treasurer collector?
No, this is something that Dennis has proposed needing for his office. He currently has a work off senior who I think he's afraid that she would run out of hours in any given year to continue to work for the whole year. But what's not clear is whether this is going to entirely replace her as a work off employee or this is on top of her work off hours.
In case she runs out of hours.
Yeah, I'm not, it's not clear from his letter.
All right, we'll hold that.
Maybe we'll, yeah. Get some more information.
Well, then if it's a new position too, it would be advertised usually.
If she, if he's going to fill it.
He's already put it in his budget with her name in it, but, um, when you create a new position, you usually advertise it.
Yep. So who wants to talk to Dennis about that?
I don't mind.
Okay. All right then. Okay.
Can you make me a copy of this paperwork, Mary, after the meeting?
Yeah.
All right, we, um, have our recommendation here. Uh, this is just, um, completing the salary recommendation on the, um, assistant clerk. This entails a, a two, um, excuse me, a two-level, um, step jump, would increase the compensation from 2185 an hour to 2346. And it's based upon the quality of his work and the.
Okay, a motion to approve.
Level of responsibility. Sorry.
You're not, I didn't pass my call back to you today?
No, I don't think so. I don't think so. That was seconded?
Yes.
Okay. Any comments, questions, costs? Nope?
No.
All right.
How about you?
Hearing none, maybe. Hearing none, we'll take a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And, um, lastly, we have, um, two things sitting as the personnel committee. Uh, these are, uh, policy determinations. The first of which is that payment of accrued sick leave in connection with workers' compensation payments, the personnel committee has determined that for purposes of applying the personnel bylaw provision allowing an employee to elect to use accrued sick time to supplement worker compensation payment, that the town shall use the same definition of wages as the workman's compensation insurer. We talked about this.
Right.
Last week. Any comments or questions?
No.
Okay. Well, why don't we vote on that one first, because we have a second one, but we can cross the second one off if we don't vote for it.
So it's basically going to align with whatever the, um.
Yeah, as we indicated, somebody can elect.
Even if it changes, will it align with it then, or is this?
We say that we will align with their definition of wages.
Okay.
Okay. And again, as we said, when somebody goes on workman's comp, it's, um, the workman's comp law allows under the Commonwealth, a, an employee to elect to apply any accrued, um, and untaken, uh, sick leave compensation to, uh, supplement the worker's compensation payment.
And is that still a choice?
It is, no, it's still a choice. It's still a choice.
It's just defining the number that we choose.
It's just defining wages and, you know.
Define wages, what the wages are.
Right.
And going with the insurance company number.
Yeah, that's all. And again, what this results in, the issue was whether they were just normal hour wages or whether they, you know, included which, what the insurance company did, the average wages including overtime for, for people. As we indicated before, the town will never pay out more than the accrued value of the sick time. This just means we will pay it out a little quicker than we would otherwise. So it really doesn't have, it's a minimal financial impact to the town.
Okay.
Okay? So a motion to approve that?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Okay. If there are no other comments or questions, we'll take a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And the second is respect to highway department holiday compensation. The personnel committee has endorsed the highway department superintendent determination that employees called to work between seven and three o'clock, 7:00 AM and 3:00 PM on Christmas or any other double time holiday, shall be entitled to regular pay for the holiday in addition to the double time compensation for the hours of call in. There was a debate about whether somebody being called in and paid double time took the place of the paid holiday. And, um, the highway department superintendent says that he budgets it, et cetera, so that if somebody's called in, and I think these are only, but it's only Thanksgiving and Christmas, I believe. Might be New Year's too. If somebody's called in between seven and three on those days, they pay them double time, period, in addition to their holiday pay.
Okay.
Again, this is a fairly minimal.
Is it, I'm just, I guess I'd be curious what other towns do or how this is handled with other.
And if you want to hold up voting on that?
So is it, sorry, is it triple time?
So it would actually effectively give you triple time for the, any hours that you get called in between seven and three. So for instance, if you get called out between seven and 10 to do plowing, you get double time for from seven to 10 and then you get your regular, ordinary holiday pay. If you are out the whole time from seven to three, uh, you would get triple time for those times. And again, this is only Chris, I think it's only Christmas, um, New Year's Day and Thanksgiving.
So if you're not called out, you're getting regular pay?
You're just getting your regular holiday pay.
I guess I, like Lisa said, I wonder if that's customary.
Yeah, that was my question, is if it's customary, if it's something that's done.
I, I don't know.
Triple time seems.
I'm betting it is customary, but I think it'd be worth looking into.
Okay. All right. I would.
So is it currently this way without the?
My understanding is that it is, it is currently this way and that's the way it's been done, but it was questions that they asked us to endorse it.
So if you fail to endorse it, does it change?
Um, I think if we fail to endorse it, uh, I, I don't know how they process the payroll for Christmas because this year, obviously, they had called out people at Christmas.
It's got to be too late by now.
Hmm?
But going forward, would it change?
I would think it would change going forward, but.
I think it'd be pretty cruel to go back.
Might be worth it just to look at what other towns do and then make the decision.
Okay.
But, but I, you know, I, I suspect that a change like that for highway employees might be detrimental.
To more.
To our roadways.
Yes, to our roadways.
And to other things.
Yeah, I mean, my thought on this is, this is the way it's been done. They were asking for an endorsement.
Right.
It has a negative effect on morale. And in fact, it's, you know, we're talking about three days. We're talking about people, you know, being called away at, you know, on one of those three holidays.
And this is definitely something that Keith's been doing.
That's what he said. That's his policy. That's why...
All right, I hadn't talked to him about it.
It says we're endorsing a policy.
Okay.
So my feeling was, you know, this is really tiny in terms of impact. Um, but think about it, I mean, we were all, you know, I, I, I drove from the center of town to Sawyer Hill on Christmas morning, and, you know, they had to be out in it, you know?
Yes, they did. It was a long, a long snowstorm.
Yeah. And that's fine, and I will probably, I just, like I said, I would just like to see what...
So do you not want to endorse this tonight?
Not, not tonight. Let's, let's just look and see if there's anything out there.
Okay. I would say on the record, I don't really care whether the towns do. I just wanna do the right thing, but...
I know, but I...
I actually think that might be true.
Yeah, triple time is...
I mean, I, I think I, I'm agreeing with you that...
We're talking about three shifts during the year.
And you're also changing the benefits of a group of guys that are used to getting this, which isn't a good idea.
But I think you're endorsing, go further if it's, if it's ratified by other custom, other towns.
And would we, would we decide to change this to public towns? Did it?
There's a signing to this effect. I just couldn't put my hands on it. There's something that was previously signed.
No, yeah, but it's, it's quite ambiguous. That's what we looked at.
I know, I know.
That's why...
But it's not just custom. It's, there's actually, there's an ambiguous sign.
There is something that is signed. That, the, it is ambiguous in the sense that it says somebody's entitled to holiday pay. It says separately that if people come in, are called in on one of those days, they're entitled to double time, not time and a half. That's what it says. So the question is, do we read one as replacing the other, or do we read one on top of the other, you know? And the way it's been done is they read it on top of the other.
Okay. My guess is the way it was initially intended was double time, but, you know, I guess this is the way it's been done, so...
Yeah.
Uh, you know, I really don't, I don't know.
I suspect that what you're gonna find is that there's some that do and some that don't, and then we'll have to make the decision, whether we do it tonight or next week.
Well, I'm willing to make the motion and put it on the floor.
Okay.
So I will make the motion. Is anybody willing to second it tonight?
I'll second it.
Okay. Um, are there any comments or questions before we take a vote tonight?
No, I think we sort of commented.
Okay. Uh, all those who would be in favor of endorsing this policy tonight, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay, hearing none, we'll just endorse the policy. You get to sign it back.
Then I get to sign it.
Don't worry, the record will show we all voted for it.
Yeah.
And, and Lisa, if you still wanna look into it, it might be interesting information.
Yeah, I just, it's just not something that I've ever, you know, triple time's not something I've ever heard of, but...
It's, again, it's not so much so...
I mean, it's a short, I mean, it's a short time. I just, I get, I get concerned about...
No, I mean, I know in my own firm, if somebody's called in, you know, on the holiday, okay, um, they get, they either can take the pay for the holiday, or they can take comp day, which means they're paid for it anyway, and they're paid double time when they come in. So I don't, I don't see this that much different than I see in other, in other applications. I mean, when you call it triple time, it sounds like, yeah, but, you know, if you have somebody who has a holiday...
Yeah. Firstly, I'd rather have the, the comp type, but...
Mm-hmm. Yep. Okay. Next, we have this web show thing, right?
Yeah, it's the same thing we talked about, where they knew there would be changes in the dates and that sort of thing, I think, isn't it?
Oh, there were changes.
It's the same thing we've been, like, doing the last, like...
Yeah.
It's just another signature paperwork for the same project with the actual closing date.
The actual closing date is now on here? January 31st, so that is the additional change. Okay, so that's what this is affecting. A motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any comments or questions?
No.
All right, hearing none, we'll take a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And the last thing is to authorize my signature on, um, project agreement for...
Two separate purchase and sales agreements. Did you sign, it's not two for one?
Yes.
Okay.
I did see that. Yeah, there are two parcels. Yep.
I thought we had already authorized my signature. I thought we had already authorized you to sign the one for...
We did, but it's here, and I can sign this. All right, and that's, uh, basically the project agreement that will allow us to get two-hundred-and-eighty-seven thousand dollars toward the purchase of the conservation restriction on Great Oak Farm on Highland Street.
Okay.
All right. Is there anything else to be brought before the board?
Can I red you here for a second?
Yeah, of course.
Could you do me a favor and try to break out the line items of the officers in the fire department? See if you can get that broken out last year versus this year. It's, I think it's such a huge expense, it's probably worth having that as a separate, just the officers, or at least the senior officers, the chief on down to the, to the captains.
Sure. I mean, that won't necessarily be a part of the budget, but that, we can certainly do that as part of disclosure, yes.
It'll be more transparent, and I think there'll be a commotion at the town meeting anyway, but...
Yep.
That'll...
Oh, no, no. I mean, we actually, and I spoke to the, the chief about this when we spoke about this. I said that we need to have at least a couple of educational meetings in which we talk about this restructuring, what we're doing with it, what it's costing us in, you know, in some detail, and we do intend to do that, uh, probably likely sort of last week of March, first, first part of April, so that, you know, we will get that information out there before the annual town meeting.
And perhaps a release, some kind of a press release, a release of some sort from the chief, summarizing his part of the budget, so that...
That's a good idea.
It'll be pretty transparent. It could be posted, right, on Facebook?
Yeah, no, no, and, and again, I, we, I have no, no problem with the transparency of it, and, you know, I spent a good amount of time talking about, you know, the sort of structural aspects of that, so that we could explain it and indicate how coverage was going to change, and, you know, who was doing what when, and what we, you know, what we were paying for, and how we were deploying the, the full-time and the per diem under this. So we certainly talked about that, and we will provide explanations about that. And I think your points are well-taken in terms of some of the other things.
Thanks.
Yeah.
And a different note, you may remember, I sent out an email through Mary, request from the EDC, but now I'm wearing the EDC hat, requesting that the boards, especially the ZBA, U, Capital, let us know when there's something financial or commercial or commerce-related, like Regal Cinemas, which is, which is what struck me. You know, if we can get a heads-up in advance enough, which I know is not realistic in most cases, if it's sufficiently advanced, I'll bring it to the group, and then you can get our input.
No, that would be great. I think, and as, we, I'm aware of your request, I think that would probably, the nickel didn't drop for me, because, you know, that, that's coming in on a sort of a licensing thing, but yeah.
Well, there's a lot of moving parts. There's a lot of moving parts.
Yeah.
But if I could reinforce that...
Yeah, that's fine.
And you could mention it to some of the other key boards as well, or Mary, maybe you could mention it to the other boards when you think of it. Then we can put it before our group to...
If you wanna draft what you want your message to be, I can blast it out to...
Well, you already put it out. You put it out. You remember I emailed it, and you put it out to the, to your list. Just I'm reinforcing it by being here, that's all.
Yeah.
I'm sorry, what do you want me to do?
Resend it, I think is what he's saying.
Do you want me to resend it?
You've sent it already, a month or two ago. But if, if, in your travels through the town, boards and committees and leadership and bosses, you could reinforce it, that'd be great.
No, that's fine. I would try to be mindful of that as well.
And if there's something that's of particular interest, and you want our input, then really make a point of it.
Absolutely.
And if you don't want our input, you can make that point, too.
All right.
All right, that's it.
All righty, thank you. Anything else? Selectmen's updates, et cetera?
The Highway Barn's moving along and, I think, doing very well. Um, they still think they're going to make a February end date. Um, I don't think, I think the construction people think that, but we shall see. Um, we're figuring that it'll be done when it's done. But it did look very good inside.
That sounds like a safe prediction.
Yes, exactly. Um, it, it, you can actually see, you know, drywall going up. The guys were doing the drywall in the, in the office area, and, um, so it's starting to take shape, the offices. And then, of course, then there's the big open areas where the trucks and that will be. It's very cold there on Wednesday morning at eight o'clock.
So it is.
It's cold everywhere Wednesday morning.
They have a space heater, or, yeah?
They do, but personally, I prefer my pellet stove. It's very cold. I don't know how they do it.
I just had a question. Somebody asked me about the pole and the septic at the eighteen-seventy. Did that ever get squared around?
Yes.
Okay.
Well, I mean, squared around, I...
Well, are they, do they have a place to put the pole that's not in the septic?
I, it is, it is still unclear to me why they needed that information, because there was no pole that is anywhere near there. I suspect somebody might have said there was a septic system across the street, and they, I don't think they necessarily have to place any more poles. So...
Okay.
Um, yes, I was able to, I worked with Leann, and we pulled the, I mean, I knew, I knew where it was myself, but we, actually, we had a, a plan, which I didn't necessarily have a hundred percent faith that we would have, because that's been in there for so long. But we actually did have a plan that was in the Board of Health file, and I did transmit that and asked why. And my contact sent, uh, an internal email from National Gridback that simply asked for the information and didn't say why they were asking for it.
Okay.
Um, so there you are.
We're good.
We're good. I mean, no, no, it's nowhere, it's nowhere near there. I don't think there's another pole, but that actually brings, I was going to say that I'm hoping to get an update to the, tomorrow or Wednesday that will, you know, indicate when we have a final hookup on the three-phase, and I will send that around.
Good.
But that's really, at this point, it is just the, you know, the sort of final work for that, and, um, they have to come and make the, they have to spend a day, they say it usually takes, doing the final adjustments and calibration of the elevator, and then we'll be back open for business on that site.
Yeah, well, good.
Yeah. And as I say, the septic system thing, I was like, I had a feeling like they put the pole in, and then somebody said to them, you know, the septic system for that's across the street, and they were like, completing files or something, you know, but that, that's the way I'm gut feeling about what was happening there, but...
Okay.
Okay. But the poles are nowhere near there, so...
All right.
Anything else?
Well, um, the town management had a, um, a town administrator in that brought a lot of really good information last week.
Oh, nice.
Educational, if anybody wants to look at my notes.
Excellent.
All right.
If, um, next time we have a Devon's meeting, and you wanna ride along just to meet the, meet the Glares?
Okay, yeah, just let me know.
That'd be fine. Um, I don't know when that will be. It was supposed to be Wednesday, but now it's too late to post. Um, so we'll, you know, we'll keep you posted, right? She's on the, she's on the email list now, or hopefully. If I see you're not, though, I'll, I'll let you know.
Okay. But I haven't, I haven't seen anything from there yet, but...
No, there hasn't been anything. Nobody answered today about, how about the posting? Are we...
All right.
So, all right.
All right. I would take a motion to adjourn if there's nothing else.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And, um...